Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regularly scheduled Haverford Township Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 at 7:06. On October 2nd, after our work session, the Board of Commissioners met in executive session to talk about personnel and litigation matters. And today, at 6:15 before this meeting, the Board of Commissioners met again in executive session to talk about personnel, real estate, and legal matters. Madam Township Manager, would you call the role?
Commissioner Gondak.
Present.
Commissioner Forresty Grapp.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Wexler.
Present.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask that everybody join in a moment of silence for the victims of the terrorism in Israel this past weekend. Chief?
The flag in the United States of America is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the proclamation that most of you are here for today, just let me make an announcement, that announcement we made last week, the Board of Commissioners will be conducting a special meeting on Monday, October 30th at 7:00 PM here in this room to consider awarding contracts for the library renovation and expansion project and to consider the second reading of an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of One Mill Road. The first reading of that ordinance will take place this evening, hopefully. We now move to proclamations. I have a proclamation for the Brookline Baseball Champions. Commissioner Quinn.
And can we turn that around?
Now do.
He's a lover.
Well, thanks, guys. Well, I'm honored to present this, and it may take a little long because of my stuttering, but who cares? But last night, we watched the Phils lose, and that was sad. But we got champs here, and this is the only ones that we care about here. So I'll start off, and then I'll end as fast as I can. So whereas the Board of Commissioners of the town of Babbelford, County of Delaware, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of our young athletes in the community. And whereas the board wished to applaud and congratulate Brookline Baseball 12-year-old team, Kuiperstown World Champs. So whereas the Brookline Baseball and softball has been around in this town since 1967, the organization began sending 12-year-old tournament teams to Cooperstown the past 17 years as a career end for the kids. These players have been together since they were four in T-ball and playing together on other teams since they were seven years old. Well, over the years, there have been minor changes, but the majority of the 12 boys and four coaches have been with one another for six years. And whereas while sending teams to Cooperstown, they have had successful runs over the years with two runner-up years. This year, they were undefeated world champions, so I think they deserve a round of applause. While whereas ending last year's tournament, the coaches knew this team was the team. They won two tournaments, a deep run and the Make-A-Wish one. And whereas the 12-year-old summer league was even more successful, they entered six tournaments and won four, and two second-place ones. This summer, and it well ended with the team going third, 30, and six, and one tie. They also finished their last eight tournaments with six championships. Whereas the final championship was the finale, where they went 8-0 at the Cooperstown Baseball World, defeating teams from Florida, from Canada, New York, and among other teams, too. Congrats to the team, and I'm going to call the coach up now to present the kids with this award.
And if you would like to say a few words.
Yeah, I'll be real quick. The boys had a great summer. They've had a lot of years together, you know, as they grow from little four-year-olds that start out in this township league, playing T-ball at Chatham Park and up here at the police fields and down at Genther. It's great to see them grow and come together, and now 12 and 13 years old, moving on to bigger and better things, 7th and 8th grade, and into high school baseball soon. So a lot of changes. Us four coaches have been with them for a long time, so we know them like they're, you know, just like our additional children. So I've got five of my own, one on the team. But yeah, they all are family, and the parents as well. We've spent a lot of time together, and it's a great group, a great family. Township is a great place. So, yep, so I will call you boys up. Griffin Lane. And Ryan O'Connor, who couldn't be here tonight, but we'll get this to Ryan. I thank my parents and my coaches, Dave Raffensperger, Jerry Demling, and Jared Jacobs as well. So, boys, want to come up real quick? And thanks to the Board of Commissioners.
Bring the trophy.
Yeah, bring the trophy up. Thanks, guys, for having us.
Of course. Thanks for coming. Thank you for everything you did.
Is the district attorney going to miss this opportunity?
One, two, three, four.
Jack, you're going to face the crowd.
Are we short a township manager right now? Mr. Wexler, I believe you have the next proclamation.
I will. I'll read it from up here, since the fire companies are not here. We have one chief here that will give him the proclamations to this one. Thank you. So in recognition and appreciation to all the Haverford Township volunteer firefighters and fire companies, whereas Fire Prevention Week was started by the National Fire Protection Association in 1922 to commemorate the Great Chicago Fire of 1871, Fire Prevention Week teaches children and adults how to stay safe in the event of a fire. In 1925, President Calvin Cool was proclaimed the first national fire prevention week to occur from October 4th through October 10th, 1925. And whereas, in keeping with this yearly acknowledgement, this year's Fire Prevention Week theme is Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire safety. Fire prevention is Sunday, October 8th, and ends on Saturday, October 14th, 2023. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners thank all five of our fire companies, Leonard Fire Company, the Brookline Fire Company, Minoah Fire Company, Oakmont Fire Company, and the Bon Air Fire Company for answering the selfless call and educating our youth and adults in Haverford Township for all fire prevention procedures proclaimed this 10th day of October, 2023 by the Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners. So thank you to all the volunteer fire companies. We appreciate your selfless and devotion time, not only from you, but also from your families, because it takes a family to support our volunteer firefighters for the amount of time that they spend away from those families. So thank you very much, and please stay safe, and no candles on your second floor. Fire companies are having open house on Friday night this week, so please stop and by and visit the ones that have the open house. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Oakmont's is on Thursday, just so there's no confusion. Commissioner McCloskey, what was that?
Oakmont's open house is on Thursday night. Just, I didn't want to...
And the other four are all Friday night?
Correct.
Okay, great. Next item on our agenda is something I have enjoyed several times a year now, the great privilege we have for township of having our own resident, Jack Stolzstimer, serving as our district attorney here in Delaware County. And Jack and this board have a very, very good, close working relationship, as do our PD with our district attorney, and as he has done in the past, he has asked to speak tonight about what's going on in the district attorney's office and in the county, and I invite District Attorney Jack Stolzstimer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I always enjoy being here in my hometown, talking to all of the people in the community and the wonderful people who serve in public service. I just want to give you guys a briefing on a very important program that were initiated here in Delaware County, but particularly here in Haverford and Upper Darby, and that I think is doing wonderful jobs, serving the people of our community, and is really the brainchild of our chief police, John Viola. So I want to brag on John for a little bit as well. You may remember, two years ago, Congresswoman Scanlon came to me as a chief law enforcement officer and said, "I've got some federal money I can make available for an innovative law enforcement program that you think will be beneficial to the people in the county." I, again, as the chief law enforcement officer, knew exactly what to do, called John Viola. Yes, it was. John told me what he's told me in the past, which is that in his long law enforcement service, he's noticed how things have changed. And one of the things that changed is the number of people who enter our criminal justice system because they're suffering from mental illness. It is one of the challenges we face every single day, and it's one of the areas that we have the least amount of resources, both in our training and also in the provider system that we have in the county and really across America, to help these people who desperately need help. We don't need them in the criminal justice system if we can get them some help somewhere else. So John suggested that we use this funding to come up with the idea of a mobile mental health crisis team. And after long consultations with John, with Tim Bernhardt, your partner in Upper Darby, Tim is the superintendent of the Upper Darby Police Department, our human services people, everyone on county council, we came together and created a program that's now in operation and has been since May of this year. It is an embedded team of mental health professionals who are serving both Upper Darby and Haverford Township. We picked these two because not only are we neighbors, but they're the two largest municipalities in Delaware County. So we have a team. Elwin is the provider, they're doing wonderful work. We have a team that's on staff every single day. They run in two shifts. They are mental health providers, and they work in a co-responder initiative. So the idea is when a police officer comes into contact with somebody in our community who's suffering from their opinions and mental health issues, and they need that services, they can call on this team to come out, and they get the situation under control, work with the police department to make sure that we're making sure that these folks have the opportunity to get the services they need. Since this started back in May of this year, over 100 people have used the services. By the way, Elwin also, I think this is really great, John, they not only have this mental health team that comes out with police officers, but they have outreach specialists who then do follow-up in the days to follow to make sure that the people that we're trying to help actually follow through. And they've done some tremendous work getting some people who have been using the criminal justice system as a way of dealing with their mental health issues. That's great for all of us as a community, because, one, it doesn't tie up our police resources for the things that we really need them for, and, two, it gets people into a system where maybe they can get the help they need to live a good life, to be productive members of our community. So we're very proud of the program. The funding that Congresswoman Scanlon provided is going to be coming to an end. John has agreed, I think he's agreed, to host us back here, because we started this program right in this room. I was very proud of that, that you and a bunch of police chiefs that you invited, people on Delaware County Council, Congresswoman Scanlon, we talked this through. We're going to come back, I hope later this month, if they can get through that nonsense in Congress right now, and Mary Day doesn't have to sit in her office in Washington waiting for a vote for speaker. We hope to be able to bring this group together again and find out how we can make sure that this program continues to function, and then maybe a way to replicate it in other parts of the county. But we're really happy with the success of the program, and I just want to make sure that everybody on this board understands that this is really John Viola's doing. I'm very proud of the fact that he is a great leader in the law enforcement community in all of Delaware County. I learned so much from him in the last four years. But I just wanted everyone in the community to know about it, and frankly, I want people on the board to know, because I want you to reach out to county council after we have this meeting and tell them what you think after you talk to John about how valuable a service this is to the people of Haverford Township, because we need your support. So that's really my update, Mr. President. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have about anything that's going on in the county. I will give you one other just update, and I know John knows this, but recently, I'm very proud of this, too, county council signed a contract with our building trades leaders here in Delaware County to do major work at our county jail. You may have known, but Delaware County, until 2019, 2020, had the only privately-run correctional facility in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, our county jail. It's been under-invested in for years, both the people who work there, the people who are incarcerated there, and the actual physical plant. It is really a dump. They have decided, my friends on county council, our fellow public servants, they're going to invest $40 million in bringing that facility up to a better state. We've actually had people, I've had conversations with people who have been multiple correction facilities in this region, they've always told me it was the worst. We actually had a defendant recently who wanted to get state time, that the Delaware County Jail was so bad, they wanted a longer sentence, a longer sentence of incarceration just not to have to do their time at George Hill. And that tells you everything you need to know about why it's so important Delaware County is investing in the people who we incarcerate, and the people who work there, and the people who serve us. So I did want to mention that as well, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, District Attorney Stolzstimer. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for our district attorney? Jack, as always, it's a pleasure to see you, and we appreciate your service, and you're welcome back here anytime. We do have a question from the audience.
Sure.
Yes, right now, the way we're doing the pilot project, and this is one of the things we're going to discuss, is it's a co-responder initiative. So the police officer is the one who can call the team to a site. So they get a 911 call, police officer's on there, it's a tool that they can use. We're talking about whether or not we can expand that in a different way and allow them have access to the 911 calls themselves. But right now, we wanted to really try this model and see how this worked. We have a separate team from Elwin who service the rest of the county, members of the public can call that mental crisis team. I think you can find their information about it if you Google Delaware County website. Sorry, I don't have the information offhand. But we wanted to try, these are like the two best models that people in the mental health field are trying to test. One is where the community, it's open to the community, the other is a first responder model where they're actually headquartered in a law enforcement agency, so that we build the relationship between the police and the mental health professionals. And I think this is working fine, but I'll let the chief talk more about that.
Jack, just to clarify, so there has been a Delaware County crisis team that you could call. This is separate?
Correct, correct. And it's a great point, Commissioner, and the idea here was to try a different method, right, to have them embedded with law enforcement, because what we're really trying to do, and I think John can speak to this, is change the thinking of some law enforcement officers who right now don't think there's anything we can do when we go out on a call and the person's presenting mental health. We need to teach them that we have a tool for you, you just need to pick it up and use it. We're making policing much more difficult in many ways for officers, but we want to give them every tool in the toolbox, and this is one we really critically need it. So it's in addition to the one that existed, and this model, we're testing it as a pilot to see if it's sustainable and if it's in better, you know, a better model than the broad model.
Thanks.
Long answer to a short question, sorry.
Anybody else have any other questions? We do have one more in the audience.
Yes, sir. That comes from the county tax base, right? We have all kinds of deferred maintenance that's been done on county buildings. So the prison we have right now, like I said, is falling apart. So we raise taxes, we borrow money from the capital markets, and we use that to invest in our people and our programs and serve the people of Delaware County.
Well, Jack, I appreciate very much your coming to see us. Thank you for being available.
Thank you all. I guess I'm dismissed.
Our next item on our agenda is the citizens forum. We have, do you know we have, or is it? Yes. So we have people that have registered to speak, they can speak on any item, and I have the subjects of their speeches here. And then, of course, we invite people who want to speak on an agenda item. We do have a pretty full list, and I anticipate we have some folks who want to speak on agenda items as well, so I am going to try my best to moderately enforce a three-minute rule. There will not be a large shepherd's hook pulling anyone off the podium, but I would ask you to be mindful of the time, and if I do ask you to conclude, I trust that you will. Our first registered speaker is Ms. Kathy Case. Thank you, Kathy.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Case. I live at 121 County Line Road in Bryn Mawr. After all the positive things at the beginning of this meeting, I really hate to be a wet blanket, but I'm here to report on serious problems at the polo field. I have brought pictures for the board, if you'd be... Now, the Polo Field parking lot is the largest in the township, one of the largest after Crick. There are 88 parking spaces, but the lot is usually full by 6 o'clock, especially in the spring. Then people park on private land next to the lot, along the access road and side streets. You have three pictures in your package there from April 13th, when cars were backed up from the Polo Field Road all along County Line and back onto Old Lancaster Avenue, because the lot was completely full. Our neighbor Joe Durazio and I called the police. They did apparently come later after 8:00, but in the meantime, he was out there directing traffic, and I was trying to help them, and we were both nearly killed. April 13th was especially scary, because kids were jumping out of cars and running down the roads. As one picture shows, kids were also trying to leave the field by walking down a road full of moving cars. Kids the age of these players that you saw here and younger. These are all tragedies waiting to happen, and it's not just in the spring. The picture of cars parked in the fire lane, which you also have there, was from Tuesday this September. Joe called the police then, too. And we do thank Brian and several police officers for coming out the night after this incident. However, that was a Friday night, when the fields are not very populous, a lot of teams don't play on Fridays. Now, many of these problems can be fixed. The teams reserve the fields using permits for specific time brackets from the spring through fall. For moderate-use playfield, 15 minutes is fine in between brackets, but not for the polo field, it's way too short. Times could be changed, and not every bracket should be made available for use. There are also three official soccer multi-use fields, only three on the polo field. The Haverford Soccer Club has a weekday spring permit for two fields, starting at 5:00 and 1:00 and 5:30, but the coaches set up four fields. Coaches schedule different times to arrive and leave one after the other until dusk. Up to six teams can go into a field in about a three-hour slot. The LM Soccer Club is supposed to start at 5:30 daily on one field, but it sets up at least two other fields. They, too, send multiple teams, one after the other, onto the park. Each club could have 90 or more players coming and going on the same evenings. Permits should be realigned and enforced. When we issue a permit, we reserve the right to change it, and we can. When you are assigned one field, that should be all you get. Other groups just show up and find whatever space they can. We've got frisbee teams... We've got frisbee teams, lacrosse teams, other soccer teams, adult teams who won't even say where they're from. Some really get hostile if you ask and say it's a public field and they can do what they want. I've had obscenities and everything else you can imagine said to me. We should require that every group, no matter what its size, get a seasonal permit or register their origin and their requested use. Set usage limits. Put up a sign noting the field is, is a private field and it requires a permit to use it. There's no sign there that says that. There are so many problems now. What'll happen when Black Rock and LM arrive on top of this mess? Nearly every neighbor was opposed to the railroad avenue for buses' suggestion, and we still...
Ms. Case, I do need you to conclude.
What?
I do need you to conclude now. It's been four minutes.
I can't, it's only four minutes long, can't be that short.
I'm sorry, not to challenge anything, but there we go. 409, just please wrap, wrap up your comments. You certainly can share anything with us that you have in writing or send to us if you'd like.
All right. So I was just getting to my conclusion. Let me just say that the current plan to widen the road involves seizing by eminent domain private property. I didn't think our township did this. That land does not belong to the township, the Bryn Mawr Polo Club, or the Playfield Association. It belongs to two neighbors. We have within our rules for the parks now the ability to change all of these things right now. It has nothing to do with Lower Merion. We need to do something to, and we have agreements in place. That park is governed by Haverford Township rules by agreement. So we can change this. I will add the rest of this at the end of the session because it's important.
Thank you, Ms. Case. Okay. Look forward to it. Thank you. Our next three speakers have, have registered in a particular order to talk about a particular subject, Mr. DiMarco, Mr. Kelly, and Mr. Delmonte. Do you want to come up one at a time, or? Are you Mr. DiMarco?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Well, welcome.
Go ahead. Ready to roll? Okay, my name is Jim DiMarco. I live at 301 Colfax Road, and I back up the Paddock Park. And we are all here concerning the pickleball noise at the park. Now, we have nothing against pickleball or its players. Our issue lies solely with the township's inability to mitigate the pickleball sound. We verbalized these concerns before sound curtains were installed so the township wouldn't waste its money. For commissioners not familiar with this pickleball problem, this pickleball noise is actually a national issue. It's not like some grumpy old man coming up here like me complaining about, you know, people in the park. Municipalities across the country have been taken to court, and pickleball courts have been closed due to inability to remediate the sound. We have been talking to parks and recs for about a year, year and a half, and while we appreciate sound, installing sound curtains, they have been ineffective. We get sound readings around 60 decibels or higher. I believe the public nuisance is about 55 or so. This prevents us from enjoying our homes. Listen, we've been patient, and very frankly, we're kind of at the end of our rope at this point. We took it upon ourselves to consult with a sound engineer. His name is Bob Unitesh, who is also a pickleball player and a pickleball referee. I am not sure if the township did anything like this, but we did ask for them to do so. The sound engineer indicated courts should not be built closer than 500 feet to homes. Courts less than 300 feet from homes require carefully-designed abatement in order to be effective. Our homes are about 150 to 200 feet from the courts. Our homes also sit six to seven feet higher than court level, making carefully-designed abatement even more critical. And he said it's possible that they can't even mitigate the sound level coming into the second story of our homes. To have a chance of being effective, sound curtains, this is from him, should be on the outside of the court, should cover the entire court, have no gaps at the top or the bottom, and should be on the doors to the court. Our curtains cover about 45% of the court. They have gaps at the top and the bottom. Worse, from our house where I live, you look down the line and about 55% of the fence isn't even encased in anything to prevent sound from escaping. In addition to pickleball sounds being in excess of nuisance limits, it's the pitch of the ball that really creates the irritating problem. He'd indicated that the pitch is not exactly the same, but is on the same range when a large truck backs up, the beep, beep, beep. So the pitch is on that same kind of frequency, if you will. We hear this sound from before 8:00 AM and till dusk, seven days a week. So we're here to ask the township for two things. One is hire a competent sound engineer that can guarantee they can mitigate the sound problem for us. They can't do that, we're asking that you convert the courts back to tennis, which they originally were, and prohibit pickleball from this location because it's not really suitable for it. It's just too close to the homes. If you guys lived close enough, you'd understand the problem, and you have to be there to understand the problem. It's louder than you think, and if you're not there, it's like no big deal, but if you're there, it's really annoying. And so if you were living there, I'm sure you would want this to be mitigated immediately. So I thank you for your time. If there are any questions or you need additional information, I'd be glad to help her on this subject. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. Mr. Kelly?
I was going to come on.
Mr. Delmonte?
Hello. Thank you. My name is Alfred Delmonte. I live at 217 Colfax Road in Haverford Township.
Welcome, Delmonte.
Excuse me. Don't trip. I have concerns about noise, noise abatement, most of which you may have heard before. My concerns, I put a, try to put a different spin on things that are happening. I'm going to refer to it as loss of tranquility. You ever been in the park? You've been sitting there, you've been enjoying the squirrels, whatever, and then you have this theft of tranquility? And that's what I like to refer to. It's kind of difficult to relax and enjoy your time away from your worries. The noise itself is nine mind-numbing. Costly improvements have been made that haven't worked much for the township. And I need you to consider where we're going with this. Basically, if we can't abate the noise, no questions asked, we should close down the courts. That's my feeling. Any of you have questions along those lines?
Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Delmonte? I mean, we typically, in this situation, Mr. Delmonte, we take the comments from the public, and then any of our commissioners, when all the comments are over, are free to comment or, or, or ask both.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you would like to share?
That's about it.
Well, thank you very much.
Just a bit serious concern. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Delmonte. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, hi. I'm Paul Kelly. I live on Colfax Road in Paddock Farms, Judy Trombetta's ward. Parking, one-sided street parking needs to be mandated on Colfax Road in the 200 to 300 blocks. I was told I need to get the signature approval of the residents. Who provides that proper paperwork? I mean, I'll do this, and how long before no parking signs can go up? That's really why I'm here. There were some other points that Jim wanted to make, but he had a full slate, so I'm going to pick up from where he left off. The township has $10.3 million in federal funding to be obligated and spent between 2024 and 2026. Tonight, the board's considering using these funds for various things, including accessory court paving at Paddock. That's all we know. We don't know anything else besides accessory court paving. We'd like to hear a little bit more about what that is, how it was decided, determined. The current sound mitigation curtains, as you heard Jim say, they're ineffective. Spending money on more of them for the Grange Pickleball Courts, that's a waste of funding. Township code reads tennis courts are to be used for tennis only. My neighbors and I were told that the tennis courts at Paddock Park were repurposed. The Community Recreation and Environmental Center has no pickleball courts. Why? I think it's time to repurpose a soccer field with some of these funds that you would put towards curtains and put some courts over there at the Crick. As far as Paddock's pickleball courts, I'm with Al. Close them. They're in violation of township noise ordinances. They're increasing parking and traffic issues. They're non-beneficial to the neighborhood. Through a neighborhood survey, 80% of the neighborhood doesn't play pickleball at Paddock. So why? And who are these courts being maintained for? You're spending money on these. Non-t township residents? Grange Courts, there's six of them over there. Now, they're less than 100 feet from those people's back doors. Imagine the noise over there, that you're going to try and put curtains on and try and squelch the sound? Now, those courts, as far as I know, they were constructed. They weren't repurposed. Whose idea was it to put those courts less than 100 feet from somebody's back door? I went over there to look at them the other day. There's six courts, one of them being used, four guys on there in their 30s and 40s, wearing Lower Merion t-shirts. Just happened to see the car parked next to mine, Borough of Norberth parking permit. Coincidence? I don't know. My neighbors and I were told the commissioners can close the courts. This is a problem. It's a problem that the township created, and my neighbors and I feel it's a town, it's a problem that the township should eliminate.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anything else? Mr. Kelly, I think with regard to your question about parking and about the petition and the 80%, I think if you speak with our police chief, he'll put you in touch with the right people in the PD who can get you that, those forms or whatever information you need for Next on our, next on my agenda is Mr. Landry, Peter Landry.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm Peter Landry, and my wife Kim and I have lived at 757 Polo Road for more than 40 years now. That's one house down from Railroad and across the street from the polo field. I want to stay right at the start, that we love the polo field. We love all the users, and we love the sounds of the kids and the adults who play there. We love the sounds of fans and families cheering them on. We love the sounds of bats hitting baseballs and feet kicking balls, soccer balls. We've watched with interest and I would say some trepidation over the last year as Haverford and Lower Merion have attempted to negotiate a new agreement, and that would change both the operation and the ownership of the field. It's, we have interest in the neighborhood, of course, because the polo field is the centerpiece of our neighborhood. The trepidation is because the negotiations to date have taken place entirely out of the public eye, and Haverford and Lower Merion have been negotiating for months. Yet in all that time, the neighbors who live around the field and the entire Bryn Ford community have not even seen a draft proposal of what such an agreement will include or even an outline. And now we learn that it could come up for a vote next month at a commissioners' meeting and a final vote. Commissioner Cavanagh has worked hard to reach out and keep us in the loop and where things stand, and we appreciate her efforts to meet with neighborhood groups and to bring other commissioners over to see the field firsthand. Yet her efforts have been handicapped by a lack of concrete, official, public information from the townships. The residents who are here tonight and who live around the polo field, and there are a group of them back there, we came out here just to show that we really do care about this issue. We want to be responsible and engaged citizens. We want to contribute to this agreement that's in the works and to offer feedback based on our commitment and investment in this community and our respect for its history. We want to ensure that the agreement is the best it can be for the Haverford Township and for our neighborhood, and we want genuine input before any vote is taken in November or whenever it's taken. To ensure that, I'm calling tonight on the Board of Commissioners to make the agreement public, even if it's in, still in its final draft forum. If you have to put it on the agenda as new business and vote to release the details, do that. Bring the details out from behind closed doors and let them see the light. Give us real information so that we can stop debating a phantom document that nobody has seen and tamp down and end the speculation and misinformation that is running through the neighborhood. That is not positive for anybody, and it's not positive for us. I'm asking you tonight to be the leaders that we elected you to be and be the partners that we need you to be. Make the agreement public tonight, and we will make it work tomorrow. So thank you very much, and I hope you can accommodate us.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Going once. Ms. Brower, Maya, Mia Brower? Am I saying that name correctly? Welcome, Ms. Brower.
Pardon?
Welcome, Ms. Brower.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of you for your time and your patience. I am also addressing the issue of the polo field, and I'm going to be a little bit redundant as far as what Mr. Landry just said, asking again to tell us what the agreement is, so we can then let you know our pros and cons to that. We do not, is there a clause in this agreement that maintains the polo field as a playing field in perpetuity? Because that is a big concern. Once upon a time, there was discussion about developing the polo field. I've lived there 37 years. Unfortunately, because it was owned by the two townships, no one could get together to decide how to break it up, and therefore, it has stayed as the polo field. We need this security, and no one has addressed it. We don't want major changes out there. We don't need clegg lights, we don't need benches all over the place. We need, do need a better maintenance of the land. That polo field has not been turned over. The dirt has not been turned with new seeding in years. I can't remember the last time there was a real attempt to make things significantly better. There are mud ruts throughout part of the field, patches of green and mud ruts. You can't really play well on that kind of a field, and then we're going to be liable when a child slips and breaks a leg or worse. The Black Rock residents don't want playing fields near their home. They say that it reduces the value of their homes by over $100,000. I love kids, hearing kids out there playing, but increasing the usage by three times of what it is will destroy the polo field, and then you'll want to develop it with houses because nothing else will be possible there. We want to keep it at its current use. Also, whatever the use is, the students need better supervision. Every summer, they are jumping the fence at my backyard, and it's six feet tall and bushes back there to use my pool, and the things they've left behind are not mentionable. This is not right. If there are people supervising it, they shouldn't be allowed to sneak off and go swimming in my pool because, oh, they're not up for bat. That's not supervision. We need more of it. These are kids. They're not making rational decisions all the time, and when I go out and tell them to leave, they jeer at me. By the time the police get there, of course, they're gone. It takes one flashing light coming down a street, and you know they're back on the field. Oh, I wasn't there. How come your clothes are dripping wet? Come on, we're not stupid. So I'd like you to please let us know everything. I think a lot of effort and energy could have been saved had we been told about the agreement and the details from day one, instead of it, this constant pulling to hear the whole story. story. Thank you for your time. I'll look forward to hearing, getting answers. Take care.
We now move to speakers who would like to address an item on the agenda. I could start here on my left in the front. Anyone in the front row here? Anyone in the second row? The third row? Fourth row? Anybody in the final row back there who'd like to speak on an agenda item? To the right here, anybody in the first row? Would you like to speak? Anybody in the first row, second row who'd like to speak? Third row, anybody on the right who'd like to speak on an agenda item? Okay. Thank you. So basically, we, two subjects that came up today in our Citizens Forum, the polo field and the, and Paddock Park pickleball, which I guess is not only issues about Paddock Park pickleball, but some advice and warnings to us and the township with regard to the Grange. I will ask our township Parks and Rec Director to just address the, all of the efforts for sound mitigation, as well as any analysis and study that's been done of the, of the sound. Mr. Barrett?
Okay. We have heard from the neighbors of Paddock. They've come to the park board meetings and these commissioners' meetings, and that's where the idea for the sound curtains came. We put the sound curtains in back in May, and we had a couple installations to try to make it work between the feedback from the pickleball people and also from the neighbors. We do think that there was a significant reduction in sound. Our own observations from our park maintenance people, from the playground leaders that we had there who have been working there at Paddock through the summer. As we said in the beginning, the sound mitigation will not eliminate the sound, but it will reduce it, and we do think there's been a reduction in sound. Some of the recommendations that we heard from Mr. DiMarco when he contacted Commissioner Trombetta and myself was that maybe we should continue along the Murraybrook side, playground side, and completely envelope that, and we were looking into that option. When we initially put it in, we put in enveloping one half of the court where it's closest to the neighbors, and that was our, our first attempt to mitigate the sound. The Murraybrook side might be an area where we could address. Talk about the, how we position the sound curtain, the sound curtains from the manufacturer have to be a little bit off the court for two reasons. One is when we first put them in, we had them coming down to the edge of the court, and they were sucking up water on the court. So that would render them ineffective eventually because they would wear out. The manufacturer said they should be at least six to 12 inches off so that we can get some airflow for when the court gets wet so that it dries, because people will come out and try to play on a wet court, and that's not safe. So the manufacturer recommends that there is some gap at the bottom. But I do think that if we put more on the Murraybrook side, that'll mitigate it for the people that are across the park there, and that will also reduce the sound that they may be hearing in their backyards. But again, we will not eliminate the sound. We are trying to reduce it to a level that's below the threshold for being a nuisance.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I'm sure this is not an issue that's going to go away, and I trust the, we commissioners and the Parks and Rec Board will also be considering what other townships are doing, either other steps or whether or not you ever get to the stage of needing to just dedicate it in space with more, you know, with more dead space between the parks and the pickleball courts, but it's obviously a modern, it's a modern game, and we're all learning as it goes along. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. With regard to the polo field, Commissioner Cavender, is there anything you'd like to address this evening on that issue?
I was planning to address it in my comments at the end, once we hear all the comments.
Well, this would, this would give folks the chance to disappear now if they want to.
Sure.
Yep. Well, at the...
Still want to speak, so...
Right, okay, so we'll wait, we'll wait till the end of the meeting for that.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak about it, and I thank everyone for being here. I'm really glad to see so many members of the community here to share your feelings about the park. We all care about the park, and I look forward to addressing it at the end. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Thank all of you for, for your comments.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
So I just wanted to express my thanks to the neighbors for coming out tonight to our board meeting, to share your concerns about the impact of pickleball on your quality of life. This is an interesting challenge for me. You know, it's funny, when I took, you know, I've joked about this before, but when I took on the role of commissioner, I thought, okay, I'll be dealing with speed bumps or maybe road paving. I never thought that pickleball would be one of my number one issues that I've been working to address, but it is an interesting balance that I'm trying to play right now. Pickleball is undoubtedly a fantastic sport that is intergenerational, and so that is something that we as a township are keen on supporting. However, and we're, however, we're equally committed to preserving the quality of life for our neighbors near Paddock Park. To address the issues that were raised, you know, throughout the time that I've been a commissioner, as already highlighted, we've taken a lot of immediate steps, including investing in and installing our sound mitigation curtains. We have adjusted court hours, making it so, folks, much to their dismay, actually, I've received a number of emails expressing displeasure with the fact that we changed our hours to 8:00 AM start time, because we had folks showing up at 6:00 AM and 7:00 AM leaf blowing the courts. And so we're trying. And then we introduced new programming this year to really minimize the disruptions, hopefully, to our neighbors. I'm committed to ongoing collaboration with our neighbors and to the pickleball community and working closely with our Parks and Recreation Department to hopefully strike a balance that ensures enjoyment of the sport while respecting peace and tranquility, as mentioned, of our residential area. So, thank you. You know, I was taking ample notes. I'll work to address some of Mr. Kelly's concerns privately. But I, can you confirm, Mr. Barrett, that we do in pact have pickleball playing in the crack? Am I correct?
Yes, we have pickleball at the crack, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 to 12:00, starting in early October, all the way through Memorial Day.
Thank you. But I'll work to address some of those other concerns as well. So, thank you, and thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Chief, chief, have, have you got calls about, about this? Have the police got calls about this at all? I just wanted to, yeah. Just go and respond by yourself, so.
Yeah, when you tell them to quiet down, they listen, right? Is that what happens? Yeah, chief. Maybe you could start renting a place over by Paddock.
I also want to make a comment. These courts are starting to pop up on private property now. I've got one that was built in a neighbor's house right behind their outdoor screen import, so it's about 20 feet from their house. It's a combined basketball and pickleball court, so I think we have to look at, you know, zoning and use issues in private property now, because it's, it's, the noise doesn't abate. Pickleball parties are popping up in their backyard already, and, you know, mornings and afternoons.
I know, but I do have to ask a serious question about that. I mean, I've, I've heard pickleball. I don't play it. I think it's, I think the sound is ungodly. But, I mean, is it any worse than people using leaf blowers or chainsaws? I mean...
When a pickleball party goes from 6:00...
It's hours and hours.
Longer.
From morning to night. Like, it just doesn't stop. Like, the leaf blower is probably louder, but there's like for an hour, and you're done.
A fair point, and I, 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 please don't get me wrong. I didn't, I didn't mean to make light of that situation. I just believe, I just, I was responding to Mr. Wexler to the extent that we were then talking about, are we going to start regulating behavior on private property? And that's, that gets into a whole nother...
The complaints are picking up, even though it's not in any of the parks in the ninth ward yet, it is popping up on private property, and I'm getting noise complaints from the neighbors, because people will have an afternoon party, barbecue, and they'll play pickleball from 4:00 until 10, 12:00 at night. So, it's gonna, it's gonna pop up, not only in the ninth ward, it's gonna pop up in all nine wards at some point, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Wexler. Any of my colleagues have any other questions or comments on these issues? Okay, we will move on to what we've all waited for. After an exciting couple weeks of Philadelphia sports, we now have our township auditor to get up and say some of the funniest stuff we've ever heard, so, and to report on this month's warrant.
But first off, Larry, I do got to say that it's been about 20, maybe 30 years since I've heard the term shepherd's hook, so, but if you think it would, I would help use it as needed.
All right, thank you.
But I do, there is hope on the pickleball issue. They are making quite pickleball, so they're in development. So there is hope out there, guys. I do, but, yeah. On another note, though, I did review the warrants and expenditures for this meeting, and I found no irregularities. All my questions were answered to my satisfaction, and also for the second year in a row, I did not get to use my joke about the Phillies having a game during the meeting and having all the commissioners watch it, and I'm sure it would have been an ugly scene had they had a meeting last night. A lot of disappointment. Might have led to some inadvertent, like, no votes.
Yes, well, can we get the order? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, thank you, as always, Mr. Anderson. We will now move on to the approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the right, 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 regular meeting minutes of September 11th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any additions, subtractions, deletions, comments on September's minutes? Hearing none. Ms. Cuthbertson?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the approval of warrants. I will consider a motion to approve warrant number 10.
Motion to approve following warrant number 10, 2023, totaling $4,717,959.43. General and sewer fund payroll for September 14, 2023, in the amount of $747,528.64. General and sewer fund payroll for September 28, 2023, in the amount of $763,515.70. General fund, fund disbursements, number 10, 2023, in the amount of $2,178,391.65. Sewer fund disbursements, number 10, 2023, in the amount of $152,119.17. Community Development Block Grand Fund Disbursement, number 10, 2023, in the amount of $34,252.53. Capital Projects Funds Dispersion, number 10, 2023, in the amount of $85,484.17. American Rescue Plan Fund Dispersion, number 10, 2023, in the amount of $161,831.88. Debt Service, 2023, A Series Bonds, number 10, 2023, in the amount of $392,114.01. Debt Service, 2023, B Service Bonds, number 10, 2023, in the amount of $190,026, and that should be 76 cents. Credit Card Statement, ending September 27, 2023, in the amount of $12,694.92.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from anybody about the warrants? Hearing none. Manager Cuthbertson?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda for our consideration, ordinance number P-10 of 2023. This is the traffic ordinance, and it is a second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number 10, 2023, establishing and rescinding traffic restrictions on the following highways. Special purpose parking zones established in front of 1531 Dorchester Road and rescind in front of 2545 Rosemont Avenue.
Second.
This is second reading. Any questions or comments from any of my colleagues? Hearing none. Madam Manager?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next item for us to consider, ordinance number P-11 of 2023. This is a first reading. It relates to the acquisition of One Mill Road. I will consider a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-11, 2023, authorizing the acquisition of One Mill Road, Haverford, Pennsylvania, by deed in lieu of condemnation, subject to review, acceptance and approval of the final agreement by the township solicitor and by the township manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Yes. I just have one thing, just with the stuff, when it's done, could we talk about the put up trees and fen, fen, fences there to help protect the lights that will go into homes and stuff? So, just to keep, keep in mind.
Yes, we will definitely do that when the time comes to design the area.
Okay, thank, thank you.
The only comment I would make is just to people that are watching this, you know, or, or looking at the agenda, just for clarification, that the reason why we are acquiring this property is to address the parking situation at the library, that we're not just buying a house for the sake of buying a house, that this is being used very specifically to address not only zoning requirements, but operational necessity for the new library that we should be breaking ground on quite soon.
And this has been something that we've talked about for, for years before I was even on the board, before Larry was even on the board, to, 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 to address this, so.
Have we invited fire? Invited fire by them? I, I do, there is one other thing worth noting, and that is this. This description here indicates a deed in lieu of condemnation. It's very important for us to explain. That is a term of art and has to do with how the deed is going to be recorded and, and considered. It does not reflect any use of condemnation, either in the negotiations or in the effectuation of this transaction. It's just something that's very important for, for us to make clear. This is not, this was not acquired through any use of the township's powers of condemnation. I thought that was worth noting. Any other questions or comments from anybody?
Well, one more question. It is required by the zoning hearing board that we add additional parking before we get a use and occupancy for our expanded and renovated library. So this is actually a really important transaction for us in terms of actually being able to use that library when it is all ready for us to walk in the door.
Here, indeed. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? Ms. Cuthbertson?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is a motion for, for the board not to pass an ordinance or a resolution, but to, to allow the progress of something we discussed last week's meeting, limited municipal exemption applying to the township with regard to zoning ordinances. I will entertain a, I will entertain this motion.
Mr. President.
Yes.
A motion to forward draft language to the Haverford Township and Delaware County Planning Commission for the comment amending Chapter 182, zoning Article 7 supplemental regulations, adding Section 734 regarding a limited municipal exemption, also subject to the required public hearing primer, prior to the formal introduction by the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? This is something we discussed a little bit in the work session last week. This is something that, this is a, an exemption that many of our neighboring townships already currently enjoy in their counties and in their municipalities. And it is something that is important for the, for the township to consider. It is, by definition, a limited municipal exemption, so it, it balances our need to have uniform zoning that applies to everybody, but also the township's needs to be able to govern and to work under difficult circumstances. So, any other questions or comments on this?
Just to clarify, we're not voting on this. We're just voting to send this to the planning commissions to get their feedback before we vote on it.
Yes, thank you for that. That is an important clarification. This, this and another thing we're, we're undertaking tonight, changes to our zoning laws and changing to, let me make sure I get it right, SALDA? Saldo? Say what are the names?
Division and Land Development Ordinance.
Yes, so any subdivision and land development ordinance or any ordinances relating to our zoning require to go before our local planning commission, the Haverford Township Planning Commission, as well as the Delaware County Planning Commission for their comment. They then come back to us and then have to be subject to a public hearing that we'd hold here in this, in this room before we can take our first formal action of two formal actions necessary to pass those ordinances. Later in the meeting, you will hear of one where we have taken those steps, and we'll be scheduling a public hearing. This is earlier in the process, and we are just forwarding it to those commissions for their consideration. Thank you for that information, Commissioner Hart. Anybody else, any questions or comments? Hearing none. Adam Township Manager?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We are now considering resolutions, a number of them on our agenda. The first resolution, Resolution 2328, is a plan revision for new land development at 4,008 Darby Road. We will, I will consider a motion.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2328, 2023, that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that the said sewage facilities planning module is hereby adopted, and the submission of the module is authorized for submission to the Department of Environmental Protection for its approval as a revision to the official sewage facilities plan of the Township of Haverford for new land development for property located at 4008 Darby Road.
Second.
I have, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none. Township Manager Cuthbertson?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next resolution, Resolution 2329 of 2023, addresses a lot line change at 104 and 108 Allgates Drive. I will consider a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2329, 2023. The Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that the recommendations and findings of the planning commission are hereby adopted, and the lot line adjustment plan for Edmund and Michelle Grant, 104 and 108 Allgates Drive, Haverford Township, Delaware County, dated April 28th, 2023, and last revised on August 11th, 2023, is approved subject to compliance with the recommendations described here and above.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Township Manager Cuthbertson?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next resolution for our consideration is 2330 of 2023. This is Haverford Reserve Replacement Fence with American Rescue Plan Act funds. I will consider.
Mr. President, a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2330-2023, that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of $6,153 of the Township American Rescue Plan Fund, authorizing installation of fencing within Haverford Reserve Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this resolution?
I would like to ask where the fence is exactly going.
To remind everyone?
Yes.
The fence is actually on the opening of the turf field on Parkview Drive. When we first installed the field, there was probably a 70, 80-foot opening to allow easy access to the field. And what we found was balls were going off the field. Sometimes little people were chasing the balls on the Parkview Drive. So we put up a four fence, four-foot fence along that opening there with a gate that allows us to, you know, do maintenance on the field.
Thank you.
That's good government at work. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We, next for our consideration is Resolution Number 2331 of 2023. That is Haverford Reserve Ball Field Replacement Lights to be done with the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2331, 2023, that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of $13,931.60 of the Township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the replacement of 30 light bulbs and 10 ballast on the turf field light at reserve, at Haverford Reserve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none. Township Manager Cuthbertson?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item is Resolution Number 2332 of 2023. Again, the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is for Paddock Park paving.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2332-2023, that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of $12,787 of the Township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the paving at Paddock Park.
Second.
Mr. Barrett, do you want to?
Yes, we're gonna pave the back court, behind the basketball court that needs some paving. We've had a few residents ask us about possibility of paving so they can roller skate there or maybe play a little roller hockey there. So we are gonna be paving that. We're doing it, we've done about three or four courts in the last two years, similar situations where we're just paving the court for multi-use, whether it's kids riding bikes or somebody, you know, hitting a hockey ball with a goal, that kind of thing.
Thank you for that information. Any other questions or comments? I was trying to figure out how to pit the roller hockey people against the pickleball players, but I probably should just, yeah, I should just leave that out. So, any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey. Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next resolution for, our next resolution for our consideration is Resolution 2333 of 2023. This is the Grange Pickleball Court Soundproof Curtains, also a purchase through the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2233-2023, that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of $18,062.50 of the Township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the sound curtains at the Grange Park.
Second.
Just to follow up on the conversation from Paddock, the Grange is in my ward. I've had residents who live near the Grange who want, definitely want the sound curtains, some others who are somewhat opposed to them. I think it's worth a trial of how they help with the sound, and we see if we can make everybody somewhat happy.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
No.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
No. Resolution Number 2334 of 2023, Delco Greenways Grant Program Application. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2334-2023, authorizing Brian Barrett, Director Parks and Recreation Department, to file application with the Delaware County Delco Ways Grants Program to help fund Brookline Park.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. Township Manager Cuthbertson?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Finally, our last resolution this evening, but not our last item on this agenda. Last resolution is Resolution 2335 of 2023. This is an announcement of a public hearing, a motion for us to announce a public hearing for our next meeting to address land development and subdivision issues. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2335-2023, announcing a public hearing regarding proposed amendments to Chapter 160, land development and subdivision, and Chapter 157, streets and sidewalks, requiring the installation of sidewalks as a subdivision or land development requirement. Said hearing will be held on Monday, November 13th, 2023, at 6:15 p.m. at the Haverford Township Administration Building, 1014 Darby Road, Havertown, Pennsylvania.
Second.
Mr. President, just as a follow-up, this was a, an proposed ordinance that has been sent to both the Delaware County and Haverford Township Planning Commissions. We have gotten their feedback, and before we can act on it, we need to have a public hearing. So this would be on the agenda for next month after that public hearing.
Right, so our expectation will be that we hold a public hearing that, that evening, and then it be in front of us for consideration that night. I would encourage, in November, we do not have, our November work session would always traditionally fall the night before election night, so we don't hold a November work session. So I think we should take advantage of the public hearing to have a, well, to present this to the public and have a, have a full discussion about it at that hearing, and then, and then take it up at that meeting. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Township Manager?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next for us to consider is the recommendations of our township to award $10,000 grants to women and minority business owners. These recommendations will be presented to us tonight for our consideration and our award. So I will entertain a motion, and then we will hear the recommendations.
So as far as that, what was your phrase? Motion to accept the recommendations to award $10,000 grants to women and minority business owners as announced with the announcements to come after.
Second.
All in favor for us to, well, let's hear the, sorry, let's hear the recommendations?
So as far as the recommendations, the Board of Commissioners authorized the Women and Minority Business Enterprise Grant Program through Resolution 2320 of 2023 on July 10th of 2023. This program allocated $101,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act funding to promote economic recovery to businesses owned by persons designated as disproportionately disadvantaged. The township received 22 applications as of the September 15th, 2023 deadline. Applications were reviewed by a group consisting of staff, elected officials, and the business community. As a result of that review, the top 10 applications are recommended to the Board of Commissioners for award, in no particular order. Amy's Hair Creations, Ardmore and Amy Jackson. Bridgie's Bees Floral Creations, Havertown and Bridget Gull. CrossFit, MFP, Ardmore and Marco Dapke. Havertown Dance Center, Havertown and Christina Early. Headlines by Renee, Havertown, by Renee Volkes. Mainline Therapeutic Wellness Center, Havertown and Jessica Hawthorne. Novita Boutique, Havertown and Renee Hyde. Spanish Exploradores, Havertown and Erica Shell Rompree. Tuscany Cafe, Havertown and Silvio Monzon and, uh, De Batista. The Dimes Club, Ardmore and Meg McKernan. I think I can speak on behalf of all of the commissioners who was, who were involved in this, the township staff and the business community, that, you know, the, out of the 22 applicants, if, if we could have given more, we probably would have, just because one of the applicants did not receive any grant or any recommendation for a grant, is in by no means to take away from the quality and the excellent applications that we did see for, we did see come forward. I'll also take a moment to personally thank Amy Cuthbertson, who put in a tremendous amount of time getting this organized and streamlined for all of us.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, of course.
I'd also like to just give kudos to our Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director, Amy Cuthbertson. Really, this was her idea, and, and we were glad through our Community Economic Development Committee to help move it forward. And so, thank you, thank you so much.
And thank you. So any other questions or comments from my colleague? For our consideration is to accept the 10 recommendations that Commissioner Gondak just identified for us. So the, the answer will be to accept the recommendations or not. Ms. Cuthbertson, will you take the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um, I, I think for our consideration at a later meeting, maybe perhaps whether, uh, maybe a, a valuation of, uh, whether we want to renew this program, um, try a second round of it due to the excellent applications and the oversubscription. Um, so something for our finance committee, um, and our business development group to consider. Moving on to contract awards, we have, um, uh, we have one, uh, contract award for the township building facade. Um, just motion. An unusual one, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make the motion to reject all bids for the facade replacement project for the township building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reject all the bids made for the facade replacement project. Any questions or comments? Um, this is not an unusual for anybody watching one of these meetings for the very first time. Um, we, obviously, this is the type of project that's put out for public bid, and there are times where our township manager and township engineer, um, review the bids and are not satisfied with any of them. It requires us then to formally go through the act of rejecting all of those bids, which frees us up to begin a new bidding process and entertain new bids. So that is, uh, the explanation for what's happening here. Um, and if I got any of that wrong, uh, I know that Assistant Township Manager Cuthbertson will correct me.
Um, no, you summarize it very well, other than to add, we only got one bid also, so that really doesn't bring out the competitive nature of the, uh, concept. So we hope to re-advertise, uh, re-scope it slightly and, uh, get better results.
Excellent, um, okay, well, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, the motion before us is to reject all bids. Please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Uh, yes, to reject the bids. Uh, next item on our agenda is several purchases, um, for various departments in the, uh, township, uh, under Parks and Recreation, uh, for our consideration, fencing at Haverford Reserve.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of installation and railing at Haverford Reserve Turf Field in the amount of six thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars from Fenn Company Incorporated, Westchester, P A.
Second.
And for folks who think they hear us repeating themselves, these are contracts that are being awarded as a consequence of the resolutions we passed earlier tonight, approving the use of ARPA funds for most of these contracts. So if it sounds familiar, it is, um, but we are, um, have to do this in two steps. Um, any questions or comments on this, uh, contract? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next, uh, contract for us to consider also within Parks and Recreation is the replacement of ball field lights at Haverford Reserve.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase and installation of replacement ball field lights at Haverford Reserve Turf Field. The project includes renting a hundred and twenty-foot boom from Best Line Equipment, Westchester, P A, in the amount of four thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars. Purchased thirty fifteen-hundred metal halide lamps from Rittenhouse Electrical Supply, Ardmore, P A, in the amount of one thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. Purchased ten ballast from Colonial Electric, King of Prussia, P A, in the amount of three thousand one hundred dollars, and the labor to be performed by Charles A. Higgins Media, P A, in the amount of five thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, uh, questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um, next for our consideration is a motion to authorize the repaving of the surface behind the basketball court at Paddock Park.
Mr. President, uh, motion to authorize the repaving of the surface behind the basketball court at Paddock Park in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Work to be completed by J. Tarquini and Sons Paving Company, Springfield, P A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, that's Cuthbertson.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Uh, next for our consideration, uh, is the purchase for the Grange Park of soundproofing curtains for Grange pickleball courts. Um, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of soundproofing curtains for Grange pickleball courts from J. M. C. Lighting, L. L. C., Alameda, California, in the amount of eighteen thousand sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Ms. Cuthbertson.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
No.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
No. Okay, that finishes our purchases and, um, contracts. We now move to the continuation of Citizens Forum for non-agenda items. Um, I know that, um, uh, Ms. Case would like to finish her comments, so let me invite, uh, Ms. Case first, um, and then, um, all the rest of you. Prepare yourselves, I'll be calling on people. Welcome back.
Thank you, I really only had another minute to go, but I'm going to sort of abandon what I was going to say about Black Rock, because I assume everybody behind me will say something the same, particularly those of us on County Line Road who are very upset about the new plans, needless to say.
Spoiler alert.
Yeah, yeah, but the point is, there's huge problems there now. We really can't wait until some deal is worked out. It could, it, it'll go to the courts, it'll take forever. We have the ability to solve the, a lot of the polo field problems right now. I believe the polo field, uh, Brian, correct me.
He's right behind you, far left.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, is not the polo field governed by the Parks and Recs Codes for Haverford Township?
So I'm gonna throw some interference up in that we don't typically have a background for it, but if you want to have, they don't need to be rhetorical, we will answer them.
Okay, it's my understanding, because it's in the agreements, it is governed by our code. Uh, it pretty much has to be, because it's our property. I mean, it's the township.
Asking him that question even though you.
Well, I wanted affirmation from Brian, because I don't like to leave him out of the conversation.
Surely, our bases are all the affirmation you need, Ms. Case.
It is governed by the codes of Haverford Township. They do, I, I, I read through them all this morning, and we have amazing powers to do whatever we want with the polo field, including, um, and, and I'll redo the one that's the real topper. So we can start fixing these problems now. I mean, I don't think that we should have to put up with the intolerable overcrowding at the polo field in the parking lot that risks the lives of kids who are running down those roads while we're waiting for Lower Marion to get their act together to propose something we're probably all not going to like. So, um, I, I suggest that we start now, and there are some things in that code that we don't need Lower Marion to say, yes. We also have a signed agreement with them, signed by the heads of the Boards of Commissioners of both townships in nineteen eighty-three, that confirms that our regulations run the polo field, not Lower Marion's. So, um, among, so many of the suggestions I have, and I'll be happy to put them in writing and, and submit them to, to the Parks and Recs people, because they're really kind of no brainers. Uh, it's really an intolerable situation. Anybody who lives there will tell you that it's crowded every night. Um, the other night, there were three buses there that we discovered that were from Barack Academy, because apparently they have a, a, a permit, um, uh, to use the field. That's a private school in Radnor Township. So it, it is just not manageable. We may not have enough staff to do it in our Parks and Recs, we need to get it. We can't call the police every night, we can't get Joe Durazio a uniform to be out there directing traffic. I'm too old to direct traffic, and I was doing that one night, too. So I think, uh, my plea is that, uh, I don't want to be hung up for a very unsafe field with, because of Lower Marion Townships, whatever they're doing, uh, as we don't know. And in fact, I was prepared to read from our own regulations, a lot of them say we can do all these things, but the one that intrigues me the most is section one twenty-six eight, which says, quote, "In view of the fact that the parks and playgrounds of the township have been acquired and are maintained primarily for the use of the residents of the township, the committee on parks or any persons, person or persons designated by it shall have the right to exclude therefrom any person who is not a resident of the township." In other words, we can kick off anybody we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Case. Now, who wants to follow Ms. Case? All right, to the left here, anybody to the left? Uh, yes.
Good evening, Todd Hall is in the second ward. Um, two comments this evening on the subject of the season of fall. Um, we had discussion tonight about noise issues in the township, which brought to mind an idea I've had for a while. Um, I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners that through the appropriate and regular channels consideration be given to the establishment of an ordinance prohibiting gas-powered leaf blowers in the township. Uh, the Board of Commissioners has shown an interest in environmental concerns. This is an environmental matter, not only in terms of sound, but in terms of the pollution that they emit, in terms of the volatile organic compounds that kick up with it, breathing issues for people, um, dog experiment bits that get kicked up through it. Um, so, yeah, I just mentioned that, and I would hope it would be for both commercial and personal use, just like there are some who enjoy playing pickleball all day. There are some residents of the township who use a leaf blower all day, nearly every day, and, uh, it creates a quality of life issue. Um, secondly, along the lines of leaves and fall, um, I know there's a lot of anticipation for the leaf pickup schedule to be released, and I'm sure it will be soon. I've had a thought on this, and I say this somewhat in jest, but there's no such thing as a bad idea, I think. Um, we have a world now in sports where there is a March Madness, uh, selection show, there's the scheduled release party. So what if there was an event at a commissioner meeting where the leaf pickup schedule would be announced in kind of some type of grandiose style, and perhaps two residents of the wards could submit, you know, why their ward should receive, you know, certain weeks of the schedule? Um, it could be done through the commissioners, through public input, uh, but I think it would, uh, make a, uh, very hot topic within the township, um, even more exciting and, uh, and fun. Thanks.
That is an excellent idea.
Mr. Mariani, will you get your megaphone out and we'll like, do something fun with it?
Anybody else on the left? Oh, yes, um, second row, yes, please. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for this. My name is Rosalyn Spiegel, I live at the seven thirty-four Preston Avenue, Bryn Mawr, Pennsylvania. Um, I'm presenting this statement as a citizen, and I am also a member of the Haverford Human Relations Commission. Um, before I read it, I just wanted to thank you for taking a moment of silence for the victims of the, um, Hamas terrorists. Um, this statement's kind of a threefer. It's, uh, in recognition of Disability Awareness Month, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and Coming Out Day. October is Disability Awareness Month. Its origins date back to nineteen forty-five, when Congress passed a law to establish the first week in October as National Employ Physically Handicap Week to assist disabled veterans. In the nineteen seventies, a historic shift in disability public policy occurred. The exclusion of people with disabilities was viewed as discrimination. The efforts of disability activists led to significant changes in laws, including the renaming of the month of October to National Disability Employment Awareness Month. This designation of October as a full month was given to recognize the potential of Americans, millions of working age people with disabilities. Nineteen ninety marked the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act. This year's theme is advancing access and equity. The focus is to educate the public about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of all workers with disabilities. Tomorrow, October eleventh, marks Coming Out Day for the LGBTQ plus community. The first National Coming Out Day was held on October eleventh, nineteen eighty-eight. It is an international event which encourages LGBTQ plus people to come out to others about their gender identities. Sharing our authentic selves with others is not always safe or easy, and it's not a one-day event, but when possible, it can be an extraordinarily powerful key to breaking down the barriers LGBTQ plus people face. And finally, Indigenous Peoples' Day was celebrated Monday, October ninth. Since Columbus Day, night two thousand and fifteen, at least eleven states and a hundred and twenty-nine cities in the United States have passed measures designating the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. This affirms the presence of indigenous people on the continent when Columbus landed his ships. Indigenous Peoples' Day honors Native American history, rights, and heritage, and the land this township stands on is part of the ancestral homeland and territory of the Lenape people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in that second row? The third row? Yes.
My name's Kathleen Sheridan, I live on Dayton Road, six 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 Dayton Road. I was here to, um, talk about the, uh, agreement with Lawmarin Township with the polo field, which I was expecting to get an agreement. I guess there is no agreement yet, or no draft yet, that we're going to see. But I was reading, um, something on the internet from an organization called Hidden City. Future of Oakwell takes a turn, uh, as advocates continue to rally. And there was a quote attributed to Dr. Yanni, Lawmarin School Board, uh, I don't know what term this president would, um, indicating that, uh, there was a tentative agreement with, um, Haverford that would allow Black Rock Middle School teams to have priority, which was a word I had not heard used in the, in the, uh, meetings that I'd been to or any of the, uh, literature I've read. Priority on the polo field in Haverford Township. I'm optimistic that if an agreement can be reached, uh, that the, um, environmental and historical aspects of Oakwell would be preserved or lessen the impact of that, and minimizing the need for additional transportation to ensure that students have adequate, uh, fields for their teams. Now, I recall the original request was for two Black Rock teams. And what I saw on a plan for how they were going to develop Oak, Oakwell, if they got it, was that there would be, um, more fields there. And I saw that there was also a proposal, uh, being considered or being pitched to have only two fields there. So it sounds to me like Lawmarin is using Haverford as an outlet for having built a school and not figured out where their fields are going to be. And it sounds like more than two fields are at play here. And we haven't seen a draft agreement, and I think language is really important, and the proposal they came with, we gave them access to the field. Beyond that, it shouldn't be a, um, fail-safe for Lawmarin School District to build schools and not find fields in their own district. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the draft. I think we all should see it, there should be transparency, and it should speak to what they originally proposed and what we agreed to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else in that aisle like to speak? And in the next row? And in the back row? Yes. Mr. DiMarco.
Yes, I'm back again.
Welcome back.
Thanks. Good evening, once again.
What have we done wrong now?
Well, hey, it's not that you've done anything wrong, we just over-torked what, what we're doing is the issue. Um, a couple of things, um, um, the fact that the gentleman was talking about the pickle, the softer pickleballs or whatever they're trying, which haven't been accepted by anybody, just shows you that even the pickleball community recognizes that this is a problem, and it is a growing problem. I know when someone spoke about individual homes and all, I mean, if you, I know if you're not, and don't have this issue, you don't know much about it, but if you research and look on the internet, you'll see that there's more and more lawsuits coming up. Because of that, and you ought to consider and look into it before it becomes a bigger problem. Um, the other thing is, I know you're looking at sound curtains for the Grange as well. I would just highly suggest hire a sound engineer before you go through the expense, because if you're trying to mitigate sound, just throwing curtains up on the wall doesn't quite do it. And I know Brian had talked about that, you know, you don't need a gap at the bottom, and I think he's, he's right about you need to leave space for the curtain. I think what he left out, at least per the sound engineer, is you need like a, a six-by-six board along the inside, and then the curtain should come down to the board, so there is no gap, so the sound can't escape. And that's what basically happens when you leave gaps anywhere in the fence, which creates problems. problems for people. So they were, the couple of things I just wanted to mention and just to thank you for your time and.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarco.
Thank you.
Thank you for sticking around.
Do I need to go to the back row and come up behind Jim?
If you'd like to come up, you can, certainly. Mr. Kelly, welcome back.
Yeah, Larry, I wanted to say thank you for recognizing that the pickleball is a problem that isn't going anywhere anytime soon. Jerry, you're going to give it a shot in your ward, man. You know, all the best, although, again, the funding. I think it can be put to better use, kind of like what Jim's talking about as far as doing a study. In our case, in our ward, please don't forget, 80% of our neighborhood doesn't even use the pickleball courts, and for some reason, we're keeping these things going. And that's the part I don't understand, and maybe somebody can explain that to me, because of the increased traffic that's happening in our neighborhood, which is why I'm asking for single-sided parking. I talked to Chief Viall outside, and coming down our street, a fire truck couldn't get down there on certain days, and I would hate to see something happen and not be able to get down there and somebody had some sort of tragic incident because, well, I know these cars from outside of our township. Ours is a walking park. I mean, Kelly Music for Life has done music events in the park, have people walk from the neighborhoods, and it's a wonderful thing. But it's just not designed to handle what we've been experiencing. So in consideration, and I'm also here to get educated on the process, too. We've heard most things get voted through right down the line. I think, Larry, you said no on the curtains, but everything else went right down the line. Does new business entail my neighbors and I saying, look, we need to make this part a new business, of limiting days of the week at the park? I mean, 8:00 AM is nice, but it's not cutting it. So is new business the way that we need to go for?
I can, I'll answer that question.
I know you said rhetorical questions.
Yeah, no, but I'll answer that question when, you know, after you're finished, Mr. Kelly, and after everybody goes.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for coming up again. Anybody else on the left?
Hello to everyone. My name is Lynn Elliott, 704 Polo Road. And first, all my neighbors who've spoken, you guys have done a tremendous job. All the issues you've raised, all still very problematic. I only have a couple of things I wanted to say. First, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out to visit the polo field, to see the beautiful trees lining Railroad Avenue. For those I met and for those I didn't meet, I really appreciate the time you all took to recognize what the loss would be if those trees were cut down to build a bus pull-off. Thank you for taking the bus pull-off off the table. I'd also like to comment on the change in the process for the approval of the polo field proposal. For months now, including at the August 18th Polo Field Task Force meeting, Commissioner Cavender has told us the board would be voting twice on this, with time for public comment and revision in between. As a first-time commissioner, I don't believe Commissioner Cavender pulled this out of thin air. I would imagine that she turned to the leadership of this board, those with authority and experience, to determine what the process would be, so that she could inform us accurately. So by extension, her promise to us is this board's promise to us. Now, the rug has been pulled out from under us. We still have not seen the draft of the proposal, but we are told the board will do a first and final vote on it in November. Clearly, no opportunity for revision, barely any opportunity for review, at the most four weeks, assuming we get it this week. It feels like this proposal is being shoved down our throats. I ask that this board reinstate the two-vote process that Commissioner Cavender promised us. If we can't trust that this board will stand by its promises, what faith can we have in our elected officials? Imagine if you could say anything you wanted to your constituents but never had to live up to what you said. What kind of credibility would you have with the residents of Haverford Township? People need to have faith that you will do what you say you'll do. We need to have trust in this board. If each commissioner thinks back to when you first ran for office, I'm willing to bet that none of you ran on a pledge to do your best for Lower Merion School District. I bet no one pledged to do your best for Lower Merion Township. But I would be willing to bet that every one of you did pledge to do your best for your constituents. That's us. We. We are your constituents, the people sitting in these seats, the people who have met you on the polo field, the people who have come to meetings and sent you emails about this deal, the residents of Brynford and beyond. The fact that Lower Merion School District wants this field for this coming spring does not mean you should be willing to break faith with us. I ask that you reinstate the two-vote process with a period for public review and revision in between. And if this board will not do that, I ask Commissioner Cavender to vote against her own proposal in November. I ask every commissioner, whether you're in favor of this deal or opposed, to also vote against it in November, because the process is not what we were promised it would be. Integrity matters, and the integrity of the process matters just as much as personal integrity. Please reinstate the integrity of this process. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Anybody else on the left before I come to the right? Anybody here on the right? Yes, please.
Good evening. I'd like to compliment everybody on their public speaking. I am not a public speaker. I am not an activist. I have, this is my first meeting that I've ever attended. I would also like to thank you for two hours of polite discourse. I have three school-aged children, so I also got out of fractions tonight with my sixth grader. So thank you very much. I don't know where to start. I guess I'll just start at the beginning of my story. I am an almost 13-year resident of Haverford Township, and as I said, a parent of three school-aged children. I'm formally bringing my concern to the board regarding the recent opening of a shop on Darby Road called One Stop Shop. I'm sure you know it. I had noticed it was opened when school started again. We are just close enough to the schools that I have never gotten a bus. I have been driving in this traffic for years. So I have noticed the changes because I drive very, very slow in the morning. This shop came to my attention, and I was originally just really appalled, and just seemed like another unfortunate downturn for the township. And I was prepared to boycott the place at the very least. But then my 14-year-old son told me that he and some of his friends had wandered in because they thought that it was a candy store or an arcade, a place for kids. And I decided then that it was time for some action, and I made some calls. I didn't know where to start. As I said, I have never attended meetings like this before, but I originally spoke to the Haverford Partnership for Economic Development, who were very helpful and also shared my concerns, saying it was their understanding that this business has slipped in under a convenience store zoning code. They then directed me to Connor Quinn, your seventh ward commissioner, who was kind enough to return my call. Thank you. We spoke, and I learned that I am not the first person to take issue with this particular business. A petition had already been created and signed, and so I was forwarded that link and signed it myself and began to forward it. And to date, we have almost 300 signatures from other concerned parents and township residents. So I'm here to represent not only myself, but those other concerned people and parents whose reactions to this new business range from sort of confusion and disappointment to kind of downright good old-fashioned outrage. I have no intention to bring health statistics related to vaping to the board or to make it personal by bringing up my personal family views. My intention is only to try to express the concern of our residents, not only around the prevalence of these kinds of shops in our district, but also to the intention of our businesses as a whole and what values we're projecting to the wider community. I also do not intend to force my views on tobacco use. It's not my place to tell other adults what is right or wrong for them. And I understand these shops on a larger scale. It's a business. I understand them in, in throughways, on larger trafficked areas. People in our community, if they choose to do this, know where to find these shops, and they can shop there. People who are coming into our community for this kind of thing can come and go on Westchester Pike or on City Line Avenue or on Baltimore Pike in Springfield, wherever. I just don't think it should be where it is. Not only is this one of many shops that have popped up in the past few years to my surprise, this particular business happens to be in the middle and high school zones and in what I've considered part of our unique and family-friendly small business district. Its sign clearly says cigarettes, tobacco, snacks, and drinks, but it's the other signage, the more brightly colored than any of its neighbors, the ballooned grand opening banner, flapping flags, and buzzing neon signs, all tacky and unavoidable, that concern me. This and the fact that the owner has all of their convenience store items, candy and treats and drinks, and I think slot machines neatly and alluringly displayed up front, all intentionally welcoming whoever may wander by, and children are wandering by regularly, my children, your children, maybe some of your children. To me, this has the distinct sinister feeling of allure, and I don't like it. Middle and high school-aged children are the target market for this stuff. We all know it. Why would we allow a business of this kind to open in the middle of their school lives while we tell them in school all day the dangers of this stuff? It's a no-brainer. I mean, the store's got to go. No offense to our neighbors across City Line, but we don't need to become another Upper Darby. I'd rather take a cue from our other neighbors on the main line. We can do better. My family and others moved here because we were priced out of the main line. We were drawn in here by the family-centered community, top-rated school district, and all the community developments and improvements which have made Haver Town very up and coming. I was out of district for a year during COVID and moved back in. I am priced out again because we have had a boom in real estate. If we are going to sell homes, twins, for nearly half a million dollars, if we're going to sell single homes for half a million dollars and very much more, shouldn't our district, shouldn't our community look like it's worth it? There are so many kids in Haver Town. I would venture to say that there are more of them than there are of us. So why on earth would we populate their walkable community this way? Leave a storefront empty until a family or child-friendly business comes along. Give our kids more places to go, to shop, to work, to enjoy, not another something that they should avoid. My tagline would be, "Class it up, Haver Town." The end.
Thank you. I just, before you. Adam.
I'm sorry. Did I not get my name?
We need your name.
Oh, darn it, you're going to be able to find me then.
You don't have to identify yourself too close.
First name Amy, A-M-Y, last name Guerin, G-U-E-R-I-N. We live on Olympic Avenue.
Well, thank you for your comments, Ms. Guerin.
Thank you for hearing them.
The sinister feeling of allure, we're going to have to take your word that you're not an experienced public speaker.
I'm an experienced mother.
I don't think anybody, after hearing that, your speech there, would be fooled into thinking of anything other than quite eloquent and convincing. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much for hearing me.
Is there anybody else on the right side of the room who'd like to speak? I know that, again, at the end of the meeting, I know Commissioner Cavender will want to speak on polo fields, there was a very specific question asked to me by Mr. Kelly about new business. New business on our agenda is something that is here for commissioners to raise, something that was not yet on the agenda as part of our official meeting and official action that we can take. Anything that the public would like to bring to our attention or ultimately for us to consider an agenda, the first and best place to do that is indeed the Citizens Forum, where you've done that and brought it to our attention. Also, calling any commissioner, whether it's the commissioner of your ward or any other commissioner, and whether by email or by telephone call, contact your commissioner about an issue that is, that is on your mind, a law you'd like to see changed, a business that you're concerned about, and the commissioners will consider it and consider bringing it, you know, bringing it to the rest of our attention and determining whether or not we should act. So that is, those are the best avenues for our, for your concerns to get before us. I know all the commissioners at various times during the year also hold local meetings just for their own ward or sometimes in combination with one or two other commissioners. I know that I hold some of those at, at the Chestnut Wald School. Those are very good places for us to address things that are more specific to the ward. And in that situation, we have more time, it's a more relaxed atmosphere where we can have much more of a back-and-forth and really investigate something, get it to know the issue a little better than just the couple minutes that somebody is allotted at this meeting. So that's, that's not exhaustive, but that's a number of ways that you or any of your neighbors or colleagues can, can bring things to the township's attention, as well as all of our township staff. If you have a Parks and Rec issue, we have a Parks and Rec department. If you have a concern about public works, we have a Public Works Director and then Significant Public Works Department. Our township manager and our assistant township manager handle things at the highest level for the township. So there are a lot of avenues for our residents to bring issues to the board for our board's consideration. So, but thank you for asking, and I hope that answer was helpful.
Can I just add, in response to something Mr. Kelly was talking about, quickly, briefly?
Which thing was that?
So he was talking about parking on Colfax Road. I just wanted to point out, and I'll certainly discuss it with the chief, but ironically, the Colfax Road that is part of the third ward, the residents on that block are currently petitioning to get parking on both sides of the street. They would like that better in terms of slowing down traffic. So I, as I've said all the time to all the residents of Haverford Township, driving in town that was built many, many years ago with the number of cars we have today, with the speed the cars goes, creates all sorts of problems, and we're trying the best we can to rectify all of them, and certainly will work with police to try to get some uniformity there.
Colfax, the one that runs, Kevin, does it run parallel to Eagle, One Inn?
Actually, Two Inn.
It's Two Inn?
It's Two Inn.
Okay, all right. Because I know at some point it stops being two sides of the street, and then it's just one side of the street.
Right.
But thank you for raising that. I mean, that, we do have, one thing we do have is a great deal of disparity in the township in terms of parking. My street, Chestnut Avenue, is parking on one side of the street, the whole side, this side of Wynwood, and we have both sides of the street parking on the other side of Wynwood. Some of that is a function of signs came down, and they just never got up again. Some are signs went up that had no ordinance behind them, and I do know that our police are looking at that issue, about the issue of random signs, whether they're missing or whether they don't have an ordinance behind them. So, thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Anything else anybody on this board wants to address in response to any of these comments?
Just, Mr. Kelly, in the five years prior to the installation of the pickleball courts, I would I was, on a monthly basis, getting feedback from residents in my ward, asking, can we put pickleball courts in that, in the Grange when we resurface them? So there are two sides. I mean, I do get positive feedback from people in the area that they're happy that they're there. Certainly, I understand your complaints because I'm hearing them as well, but it's trying to find a balance.
You might not. It is late. That's okay.
Thirty seconds or less.
I'll give you ten.
Two different things between the Grange Courts, the Westgate Courts, and the Paddock. If somebody wears a Paddock course, right behind the Swiss bars, anybody from Marple Township, Ramal, Clifton Heights, can you get it there?
I'm now going to...
There's people in this room where the Grange field is.
I appreciate your comment, Mr. Kelly. Regrettably, I should not have allowed this exchange, but anyway, thank you for your comment.
Larry, I just have one thing to say about the vape shop. I think we all know how I feel about that, and we're going to work to get some, something resolved there. So I just want you guys to know that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, the next item on our agenda is new business. Do we have any new business to bring before our board?
Mr. President, sorry, Billy, do you want to go ahead?
I just have a quick one. The Bureau of Fire report was left off the agenda tonight, so I'd like to...
Oh, my apologies. Let's...
I did receive it from the Bureau of Fire, so...
Let's hear the Bureau of Fire report from Commissioner Wexler.
Okay. For the month of September, the Bureau of Fire responded to a total of 83 incidents. Fifty-nine of those were within the township boundaries, 24 were out of township and are classified as mutual aid incidents. The average personnel responders or volunteers per call was 16.8, which included 1,504 hours, personnel hours committed to those incidents by those volunteers, or 837 personnel hours committed to training, which is always ongoing in all the fire departments. And the HDPF provided mutual aid to four working fires within Delaware County and one working fire within Montgomery County during the month. Manoa Fire Company also had 31 members complete the National Pro Board Certification for Hazmat Awareness, a new requirement. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Do we have another, do we have anything else in new matters? I'm sorry, in new business?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2336, 2023, on the terrorist attack on Israel this weekend. Whereas Havertown Township Board of Commissioners recognizes the value of all human lives and stands united in support of peace and justice, and whereas the recent appalling attack against Israel and its citizens by Hamas and its supporters has resulted in innocent lives lost, immense suffering, entire families slain, and unimaginable trauma, and whereas the indiscriminate brutal attack on civilian populations, including children, the elderly, and other vulnerable individuals in Israel violate fundamental human rights and international law, and whereas it is the responsibility of all elected leaders to stand up against acts of violence and terrorism and demonstrate solidarity with affected communities. By condemning these brutal acts of war and providing support to those who are targeted, leaders can promote security and reinforce the values of peace and inclusivity within their own communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havertown, Delaware County, Pennsylvania hereby condemns all acts of terrorism Israel and calls for an immediate cessation of violence to ensure the safety and security of all people in the region. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners mourns the loss of innocent lives and strongly urges all parties to seek peaceful resolutions and to engage in meaningful dialogue to foster lasting peace in the region. Resolve...
Second. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Finish that.
The resolve this 10th day of October, 2023. I'm pleased to second that.
We have a motion and a second. Before I invite questions or comments, let me just make a quick comment about new business. It is not the practice of this board for us to consider certainly ordinances or contract purchases as a rule in new business because they are not things that have been discussed at a work session. This is a resolution. So while it is official action, it is not action that compels the township to do anything or binds township residents to a new set of laws, nor does it reflect the expenditure of township funds. Nonetheless, it is official action, so it does belong in new business. I apologize if I'm saying something obvious and certainly not doing so to be funny in any way, but there certainly was no way for us to put this in a work session. The horrible things that took place on Saturday obviously had not taken place during our, at the time of our work session before this meeting. But with that introduction and those comments, I invite any questions or comments from my colleagues about the resolution proposed by Commissioner Cavender. Hearing none. Township Manager Cuthbertson, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstegrup.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Cavender, for your work on this resolution, and thank you to all of my colleagues for supporting it unanimously. At times like these, whatever effect this can have, it certainly is a message to all of us in the township and from those of us who are elected leaders who feel the need to do something, whatever power we have to address so horrible, a so horrible an event. So thank you again. Next on the agenda is other business. We will start, Commissioner Gondak.
Thank you. First, I would just like to personally give my condolences and thoughts and prayers to the civilians who were unfortunately massacred in Israel recently by terrorist forces. I pass along my thoughts and prayers to their families and their loved ones in this time of sorrow and just want to support the resolution that was passed condemning this heinous, heinous act. That being said, to try to put a little bit of brevity beyond that, I do want to say that some people I want to need to congratulate. I want to congratulate all of the Havertown Township employees and staff and directors for putting on a very successful Havertown Township Day this past weekend. The weather was a little bit tricky for us, but you guys pulled it off and pulled it off as usual in a phenomenal manner, and a lot of fun was had by all. So thank you for that. I also want to extend a thank you again, and sometimes, you know, it gets lost on me, but I do want to extend a thank you again to all of the police, the first responders, the EMS, I mean, our firefighters in this township, the caliber, just the caliber of work they do and what they provide to the citizens. On Havertown Township Day, when it was over, I was actually driving my two children, I was shopping two of my children off at Starbucks at Eagle and Westchester Pike, and I saw a large commotion in a parking lot, and there were a lot of EMTs and paramedics, there were a lot of police, lots of flashing lights, and I looked over and my children looked over, and I said, "I think that woman is having a baby." And I later found out that she did. Apparently, a woman gave birth in the parking lot right then and there. You know, I guess you can't necessarily pick when it happens, and it just reminds me of, you know, the fact that quite often when we call upon our first responders to help us, it is in our most delicate times of need, and quite often, we don't get to pick the time or place, and they don't care when it is or where it is, but they come and they do their best and they take care of us. As far as some announcements, weather's changing, the season is here. I encourage everyone to get a flu shot. It's, you know, they're quite readily available, so I do encourage that. This coming October 15th, the Westgate Park Civic Association is having their Halloween festivities at the park. They are going to be, it's a movie night at the park. It's, they're going to be showing goosebumps. There's going to be a costume contest and a variety of games. I do encourage anyone who's around to come out. In the past, these movie nights have been a great, great family activity, and it looks like festivities start at 6:00 PM. Had to double check. So I encourage everyone to come out for the Halloween events then. Also, on October 26th, I will be holding a first ward constituent meeting here in the Commissioner's Room in the Township Building for the constituents of the first ward, but also anyone who wants to attend. It is open to the public. There will be several township officials here to give updates and answer any kinds of questions, and it's a nice opportunity to interact. So I encourage people who are available, it's Thursday, October 26th, at 7:00 PM, to attend. And finally, just a general announcement, I believe there's about a week left on the Shee Tree Lottery. I know it is somewhat of a competitive process. There are typically more trees, there are more people vying for trees than trees given away, so I would just simply encourage people, remind them that if that's what you're looking for, it's still open, you've got about a week left. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondak. Commissioner Forstegrup.
I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Cavender, for bringing this resolution to us over new business so that we can express our support for the people who have lost loved ones in this dreadful conflict and also to emphasize that we're hoping for peace in the Middle East for everyone, continued safety and well-being. Thank you. I'll echo Commissioner Gondak's thanks to everyone who made Havertown Township Day wonderful despite a postponement. It was a great day, and I was proud to be a part of the township and watching everyone have a great deal of fun. This, on Saturday, November 4th, is the Seventh Annual Dewey Decimal Dash, and it benefits the Havertown Township Pre-Library. It's a 5K run and a one-mile fun run-walk, and if you would like to learn more, you can just go to the library website. I'd also like to give public, give thanks to our folks at Public Works for their work renovating a very old sub to bus so it will become our mobile library. It was very exciting to watch people go in and see that bus and just go, wow. It was so cool inside with the custom-made bookshelves and the reading nook at the back, and it is going to be something fabulous going throughout the township, bringing the library to you in your neighborhoods while our library is undergoing its renovation and expansion. I also want to acknowledge that Penzi Trail construction really is in full swing. It is a very exciting project. The planning for this was spearheaded in part by our previous Ward Two Commissioner Mario Oliva, and I would like to thank him for all of his work on that. It was also a project proposed under the previous Director of Parks and Recreation, Tim Denny. I think it's a very exciting project, and I want to thank Brian Barrett for his leadership on this, as well as our township manager and everyone else involved. It's going to provide a safer path for walkers and bikers over Manoa, Manoa Road. I also want to acknowledge that changes of this magnitude for the immediate neighbors is significant, and I thank them for their patience during the construction project of something that will benefit everyone in Havertown Township. And last, the Landarch Volunteer Fire Company will be holding their Fire Prevention Open House starting at 6:30 this Friday. So I hope if you've got nothing to do, you might come down to the Landarch Firehouse and see all our wonderful volunteers and our pretty amazing fire drivers. Thanks.
If I could just, I apologize. I just need to clarify one thing. I misspoke. I said October 15th was movie night in the park. It's actually Friday, October 13th. It's this Friday. It's the 13th. I apologize for any confusion I caused.
Apology accepted. Not necessary. Commissioner McCloskey?
I don't know if it was to you.
Well, since everything is supposed to be addressed to the president, you know, I took it that way.
I understand. As I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, the Oakmont Fire Company's Open House is this Thursday, October 12th, 6:30. Goes to 8 o'clock. If you can stop out, it's always a fun night, and kids certainly love taking a tour of the firehouse. Also, in the Oakmont neighborhood, the Oakmont Civic Association that has redeveloped itself is having a Halloween parade on October 28th at 10:30 at Grassland Park. They're going to have popcorn, pumpkin painting, and there's going to be a costume parade led by the Oakmont Fire Company. I understand Commissioner Quinn's going to be dressed in costume for that parade as well. Kicks off at 10:30, so please be at the park by at least 10:15. This Saturday, Kelly Music for Life is presenting Havertown First Fest Music and Arts Festival. It's a salute to our first responders, the Third Annual Havertown First Fest Music and Arts Festival. It goes from noon to nine. It's at the Oakmont School area in the third ward. It's always a great time in becoming a regular part of our calendar and the music festival traditions that are developing in that area. So hopefully, people can come out and then enjoy another community event in Havertown. And then, as referenced earlier, Commissioner Trombetta and I will be hosting our annual Town Hall meeting for the third and fourth wards on October 23rd. It'll be at 7 o'clock in this building, discussing any issues that anybody wants to. We'll also be giving updates on the library renovation and expansion, some new township services, some Parks and Rec updates. Maybe we'll talk about pickleball. And some other public safety and some updates to what's going on in the township, but it's also an opportunity for anybody in the third or fourth ward or anybody in the township if they want to ask in a less formal setting and have some conversations about what's going on in township and what could, what potential we have. And I would just echo my thoughts to everyone who was involved with Havertown Township Day. A lot of work and effort went into it from everybody at Parks and also with the police and fire and all the businesses up and down Darby and Brooklyn Boulevard turned into a great day on Sunday. Hopefully, next year, we can go back to Saturday. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Commissioner Cavender?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to all the fifth ward residents who attended tonight and those who have shared their feedback, opinions, and experiences with me regarding the Polo Field over the last 18 months. I encourage and I will always encourage resident engagement, and I believe it's at the heart of a healthy democracy. I'm happy to have a chance to address the agreement, and I do understand your frustration. I join you in frustration that we haven't been able to present this agreement sooner. I want to share a little bit about the speed of the process, especially over the last couple of months. For most of August, all of September, and still into October, I have been advocating for the right solution for the use of buses. In August, I fought against the bus pull-off on Railroad Avenue after neighbor feedback and a full understanding of the impact it would have on our trees. As noted, I brought several commissioners down to Polo to understand what we would be discussing as a board. In mid-September, we announced that the bus pull-off was off the table and that we would use the parking lot for the use of buses. Since then, our engineers have been working on the best way to ensure that we could use the parking lot and its entrance road safely. The first option presented for buses would have required an impersion into the green space extending out from the parking lot, and I asked to see another design. Last Wednesday night, Amy Cuthbertson, our engineer, and I looked at a sketch, and we proposed a new solution for buses to use the parking lot with minimal impact. We're in the process of confirming that this solution is workable, and we want to include those details in any final agreement. The final draft agreement has been continually revised through October because of numerous ongoing changes to address neighbors' concerns such as parking and bus drop-off. Finally, the remaining issues still with the agreement deal with Havertown's desire to address neighbors' complaints and concerns and to provide for better accountability to address these complaints with Lower Marion, which were never in place before, they're not in place now, and they need to be included to be sure that residents' concerns are addressed. I want to provide a couple of direct answers to the questions that were raised, just so you have some... you have some assurance on these. There is no change of use that could be made due to a deed restriction which will be transferred into this agreement. This land will always be a park. It will always be playfields. On priority use, that's a term coined by Lower Marion Township among its own permitting. It has no meaning for Haverford Township. It's Lower Marion's way to assure their school district that they will prioritize their use among their permits. To us, Lower Marion Township is a permiti and subject to the same rules and regulations which will be clearly articulated in the agreement. In terms of maintenance, we will set the maintenance and permitting terms as desired by the Haverford Township Parks and Rec Department, so there will be no decrease in quality, accountability, or responsibility. I've received assurances from our solicitor and representatives from Lower Marion that we will have the agreement completed by this Friday. I will be speaking with Brinford Civic on Sunday, and trust me, I don't want to get up there in front of you without an agreement, and I want you to see it before that time. I understand your doubts about the history of the field, your doubts about the relationship between the two townships, and your doubts about the use of this historic park. I hope that as we near a final agreement, you will have no doubt about our diligence, our transparency, and our commitment to residents as we have developed this agreement. Again, I want to thank every person who came tonight, has shared their thoughts with me over the last 18 months, and for each and every person's commitment to the Polo Field. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Commissioner Quinn.
Yes, I too would like to send my prayers out to all that are impacted by those attacks. So, I know that I stand with the whole board, board, board here in our prayers and thoughts. And this Saturday will be the Billy Lake, the ALS basketball marathon. It will take place at Monsignor Bonner from 8:00 to 5:00, and all the money raised goes to help find a cure for that disease that is the worst disease ever. And also, this past weekend, we saw how great, as I always say, the Town, 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 Town Day is the best day of the year. Some say I'm obsessed with that day, which I know that we all are, but this year, we had a meatball-eating contest. I tried to get the chief to join, but instead, he got, or he got Long to join the thing. But I don't think that Sergeant Long did that well in the meatball-eating contest, but it was a success. And I know that Centellas, I thank them for all that because they donated everything to the firehouse. That was great. And as Sherry said, it's great that the trail is beginning to, we're beginning to see some work done in there. It'll be great to connect our wards. And also, between now and our next meeting, get out there and vote and have an impact on your community by having your voice heard. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yes, there are a number of projects about to get underway at the Grange besides pickleball. The playground, there's going to be a new playground piece of equipment installed. There's going to be some regrading of a slope behind the pavilion with reseeding to try to improve the appearance of that area, as well as the installation of new basketball backboards and a resurfacing of the court to give neighbors a chance to find out what's going on. This Thursday, October 12th, at 4:30, Mr. Barrett and myself, as well as some of the Parks Department employees, will be there to have a public meeting at the pavilion to let people know what's going to happen and to get any input. There's also a couple of events happening in the Eighth Ward on Friday, October 13th. The Pennfield Civic Association is going to present movie night at the Grange. The event starts at 6:30, and there'll be popcorn generously provided by Nolan Painting. I forget the name of the movie, unfortunately. And also on Friday night, October Frest at the Nider Hall. It's from 7:00 to 10:00. This is a fundraiser for the Historical Society. There'll be beer, music, and food, a silent auction and raffle. It's $30 a ticket, and again, it benefits the Haverford Historical Society. And as Kevin already mentioned, on Saturday, the Haverford First Fest will be held near the school building on Eagle Road from 12:00 to 9:00. And that's all I have. And yes, voting next month, November 7th.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner Wexler.
Yes, just several things. I'd also like to publicly thank all the volunteers, the staff that put together Haverford Township Day. There's a lot of work behind it that we don't see. And then, last but not least, our Public Works Department. All that trash has to be picked up, and the roads were put back together quickly, so they do a heck of a job, even on a weekend, even on a Sunday when they weren't expected to do it. Also, Bon Air's open house and demonstrations will be Friday evening, October 13th, beginning at 7:00 PM. And then, also, Sunday at the Bon Air Fire Company, from noon to 2:30, they're having a food drive for the organization called "Grands Stepping Up." If you're not familiar with it, it's a great organization of traditionally grandparents or older parents that have taken over raising kids, a lot of instances where substance abuse has gotten involved in families, and grandparents have taken over. It's a great place if you have baby furniture. In addition, they do accept that at the church where they're headquartered out of. But this Sunday, they are collecting a food drive for that organization as well. And then, also, I wish you have a safe Halloween, keep the kids lit up and everything. I also want to thank the fire companies. In addition to the open houses, if you forget, but they go to every kindergarten, daycare center, first and second grades, through all our schools, both parochial, public, and all the daycare facilities throughout the township. So, in addition to going out and fighting fires, they spend off-duty time going out, training little kids, and letting them climb the fire trucks, and giving them demonstrations. So, it's a real, it's a love effort. It's contagious, it's fun, but it's also very important because there are the kids that go home and say, "Mom and Dad, can we practice that fire drill? How do we get out of there? Where do we meet when we get out of the house?" Very important stuff that your kids remind you of, but as I'm sure the chief can tell you, it has saved lives in the past. So, listen to the kids, and we reinforce it when we do those visits. And then, also, I'll just reiterate, as a father of four girls, candles during the wintertime, young women, young girls, teenagers, they love their candles. I don't know how many bedroom fires have started there. You've been at it longer than I have. It happens. They catch on draperies, they fall over on bedspreads, they light off rooms. I prohibit, and all my grandkids know it, all 11, no candles on the second floor and no candles in the bedroom. So, it's a safety thing. It sounds old-fashioned, but it will save a life. So, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. President, thank you. I wish to just express my thanks to Commissioner Cavender for reading tonight's resolution condemning the recent terrorist attacks carried out by Hamas against Israelis. By supporting this resolution, we send a clear message that terrorism and violence have no place in our world. We, as a board, stand in solidarity with the people affected by these attacks, mourn the lives lost, and reaffirm our commitment to promoting peaceful coexistence and dialogue as the only viable path toward resolving conflicts and ensuring the safety and well-being of all individuals regardless of their backgrounds or beliefs. So, thank you again, Commissioner Cavender. I also want to echo my colleagues in thanking Haverford Township Day Committee, the entire Parks and Recreation Team, dedicated volunteers. We had generous sponsors, including the Kelly Center, so thank you for that, and our entire community for really making it a successful day. And thank you to my colleagues and everybody who indulged me on taking some selfies, so thank you for that. I love a good selfie. And finally, I wanted to mention the Paddock Farm Civic Association is having their Fall Fest on October 28th from 1:45 to 5:00 PM. So, I look forward to that, and I guess I will just echo that we do have a Third and Fourth Ward Town Hall meeting, and so I'll look forward to seeing you and to seeing my other Fourth Ward residents and having a hopefully great discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. I just, I wanted to, something happened at Township Day that I just think was worth noting at our meeting. One of the, one of the most enjoyable parts of the day was when the head of the Township Day Committee recognized certain businesses in town who have been in business and operating in Haverford Township for 50 years or more uninterrupted. I'm going to quickly read those businesses. These are businesses that we will never be picketing or trying to, you know, not encouraged to be in the township, but these are businesses that we should really thank for their investment in our town. They are The Camera Shop, Katz Pharmacy, O'Donnell Roofing, Dan's Plumbing, Stretch Funeral Home, Jacob Low Hardware, Wagner Real Estate, Yearsly Service, Boyle Energy, Heikl's Bar and Grill, favorite of the Sixth Ward, Burke's Inn, Maroni's Pizza, another Sixth Ward, Brynmar Glass, Costello's Appliance Repair, Kenny's Plumbing, Ivy Inn, John Sipulon, Yakabuchi Formalware, Al Lawrence &amp; Sons, Wynwood Lanes, Sixth Ward's favorite bowling alley, The Head Nut, Sixth Ward's favorite place for everything else, The St. Jude Shop, DeVito Brothers, Michael O'Kane Plumbing, Jay Halligan &amp; Sons, Orsini's Auto Body, The Lamplighter, Havertown Auto Tags, CNM Sporting Goods. These are all businesses that have had a great impact on many generations of people here in Havertown. Just two weeks ago, I had the great fortune of being at the opening, the grand opening of the Dimes Club on Pont Redding Road. What the Dimes Club has in common with these businesses that I just read that have almost 100 years, or some of them, of business, is that they both, they both took a risk. They all took a risk, they all took a gamble to bet their life savings and their future on this town and on this community. That is a good gamble to make, and that lengthy list of businesses that have been around for 50 or more years should provide validation and confidence to the folks that have only been in business for a month, or six months, or five years, or 10 years, to know that Haverford Township is a good place to invest your life and your treasures. And so, I just, it was important to me that I read those names aloud and that we recognize the gamble those folks took and the payoff that they and we have received. So, I also want to, it's very important to remember between now and our next meeting is Election Day, and this is an off-year election. There are no federal positions up for position, but it is, the off-year elections, the odd year elections are when local elections take place, and tonight's meeting is a very good example, as all of, so many of you came up and spoke very passionately about something that really affects your life, your backyard, your street, your children, your home. Decisions are made that affect 90%, maybe 95% of what matters in your life are based on decisions that are made in rooms like this, in this room for all of us here in Haverford Township, and small rooms across America where township commissioners, council people, city or town officials all meet. And so, it's very important, it's important that you pay attention and that you participate in local elections because the job that local government does for you is so crucial for your life. So, pay attention, demand a lot from your local, from your local representatives, and then vote the right people into office. So, I just encourage all of you to take your duty seriously on Election Day, no matter how many offices are up for election and how small you might mistakenly think the stakes are, because a night like tonight is a reminder to us about all politics really being local, and sometimes stakes are indeed very high. On that note, I will bid you all a fond good night, and if nobody else has any other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
We are adjourned.